All right, welcome. Good evening. Today is May 5th, 2021. It's 5:08. And this is the meeting of the Racial Equity and Policing Commission for the City of Salt Lake. My name is Dante James. I'm one of the facilitators for the commission and we welcome all of you here. City staff, police officers, commissioners, just those who may be watching or listening in other places. We welcome your engagement and participation. So why don't we get rolling? There's quite a few things on the agenda. I don't think all will take very long, but there's two things I really want to highlight to get to. One is recommendations will be presented from the policy subcommittee. So we're looking forward to those and your thoughts and feedback on what to do with those. And then I wanted to debrief briefly the dialogues that were held the last couple of weeks between commissioners and officers. And it's our chance as we come back together as a full commission, to just have an opportunity for debrief. I don't know that there's many of the officers currently on the call, but still would love to hear from all of you who participated in those dialogues. And Dr. School is going to facilitate those. So first, just briefly, a review of the minutes from April 7th and March 24th. Wanted to see if there was a consensus on approval of those. Also, just, well, I'll see if there's a consensus on those. Then I have a couple of comments on both of those, but is there any changes, edits to those minutes? So do we have a consensus? Does anyone disagree with the approval of those minutes from April 7th and March 24th of this year? I see no.
I need to approve them.
Again, Commissioner Hawkins?
I moved to, oh, I did too wrong time. I need to approve them.
We can do that, too.
I'm sorry.
Anyone disagree with the approval of those? We have a second and we can go all official. We have a second to the motion. Okay, I see a second. All in favor? All opposed? All right, so commissioners, meeting minutes from April 7th and March 24th have been approved. See, we can be totally official if we need to be. Next, just a couple of comments. One, the April 7th meeting minutes included a discussion around the budget, budgeting process and commission involvement and input into that process. If you haven't already noted, the mayor presented her budget and it's available online. I would encourage you to take a look at it. I think it reflects that she has heard several of the recommendations from this commission. Peer court will be funded. There will be additional funding for social workers for the CIT team so that they're available for more than one shift. So I think those are two very, and also a continuing dollars for the continuation of this commission in whatever form it's chosen to be. So that is also set aside after this June component ends, there'll be, there's dollars set aside or requested for the commission's continuation. So I would encourage you to take a look at, look at that. Also, as it relates to matrix, matrices, matrices, whatever they are, also their recommendation or summary is also on there. Several of the recommendations from this commission are also folded into some of their language and their recommendations for doing things differently in the police department as they've made some recommendations. So I guess the bottom line for me is that clearly some of the commission's work is being heard. And I think you can see that reflected in some of these documents. Also, there was a comment regarding just making a general statement that I think we'll get to that this time. But in the subcommittees, again, continuing the idea that we're not going to come up with 40 more recommendations per subcommittee, even though maybe that's the number that might best be needed, but to create some general language about recommendations that would go back into the final document from this commission. And so considering to think about what those overarching recommendations in general terms would be for changing culture, climate practices of Salt Lake City's police department.
Dante?
Yes?
May I have a quick word about the budget process?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Allison Rollin from the city council office. We actually, as Dante mentioned, the mayor delivered her budget address last night. That is essentially a set of proposals. It's the mayor's recommended budget. And so now it's the council's turn to take a shot and to look at, at basically the budget from top to bottom. They do a series of briefings from May 4th to about June 15th. And each one of these briefings, at least on the Tuesdays, which almost all of them are, the REP commission will have the opportunity, as always, to come in and talk to the council members. So if you have any, either as a group or as, you know, smaller groups, groups of individual or single individuals, you have recommendations or suggestions or opinions that you want the council to hear. Please do take advantage of us. We'd be happy to make sure you're, you're ready for the agenda, that you have the, and ready for the council meeting, that you have all the information you need and that you can get into the meeting. There are also formal public hearings on May 18th and June 1st. And then on June 8th or June 15th, the council will vote on the final budget. So this is a, you know, this happens every year. The mayor proposes her budget. The council goes through and makes some changes to it. And so as Dante was saying, there are, there have been changes already evident in the mayor's recommended budget based on your recommendations. The council is also interested in those changes and so they would love to hear from you. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Allison. Any questions based on Allison's description of process? Okay, thank you. Next up, Commissioner Prospero has been invited to make a comment or a couple of comments regarding, on behalf of the core commissioners. So Commissioner Prospero.
Thank you. We found a discussion during our core commission meeting. And we wanted to make this announcement to hopefully be able to improve or elicit more communication between the core membership and the rest of the core commissioners. I mean, the rest of the commission members. So we wrote up a letter and so I'm going to read it out and hopefully, again, it'll, it'll encourage people to, to give us a holler. This is again to the core, this is from the core commissioners to the commission members. The core commission members would like to affirm that all views from the commission members are sought and valued, very much so. The commission members are selected, were selected by the core because of their diverse experiences, points of views and opinions in order to guide a balanced, well-rounded and better informed recommendations by the commission. And that, that was a process for us and we really emphasize trying to get that diverse point of view. We understand that some individuals are not always comfortable speaking in public forums. And this may hinder the communication of important ideas and information. And we get that not everybody can be Steve and talk forever. Some of us are a little bit more shy and, you know, don't feel comfortable. And, you know, because of that, you know, we want to extend that invitation to all members to reach out to the core, either us as a group, because again, we meet every other week, we still say as a group, or individually for communication, discussion, or, or just, you know, so we could talk. All core members are open to speaking with any and all of you. But, you know, if you feel that there's an individual that you may connect with, or, you know, just really feel like you can have a better understanding on some particular concern or suggestions that you may have, that you think a certain core member may also be able to assist in that and support, or at least just have that discussion. Please don't hesitate to reach out. In case, if for some reason you don't know who the, the core members are, it's basically Verona, Nicole Darlene, and Kamal Reverend Davis and myself. So please, 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 again, yeah, this, this can be intimidating, talking, pushing in public with a whole bunch of folks seeing us from the outside in. But if, if you want, please reach out to us. We'd love to chat. Thank you, Dante.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I would certainly reiterate, we really want to hear from each and every one of you. And so if that's through the core commissioners, that's just as fine as right here this evening. And also, the core commissioners are also responsible for facilitating and kind of honing in on what the next agenda will be for the full commission. So if there's particular items that you would like to discuss at the next, or any particular full commission meeting, please let either the core commissioners know or myself, and we're happy to, to see what we can do to get that on you, Dan. I think I'm going to hold off on public comment just real quick to see if we can get as many people as opportunities to do that in just a few more minutes. But then Allison, I just want to confirm that you've kind of, or anybody else, offered all that you wish to on the city's budget process, the timeline and the input for commentary. Anything else that you'd like to add to that?
I appreciate it, Dante, since I think I jumped the gun on our item. If I could just add one other aspect, and that's that, as you recall, the council's audit consultants, Matrix, provided their reports to you way back, well, actually, it was just been a couple of weeks ago, but the initial report was back on April 20th. If you have any comments on those or any suggestions, we're also very happy to take those. Lehu, my colleague in the council office, actually sent an email last night at about 8:58 to each of you. And that contains lots of detailed information of how you can get ahold of us, how you can watch the mayor's budget presentation. There are also the documents from the Matrix consultants. So please, any, all communication is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any follow-up question for Allison on that? All right. Next up is just a report on the upcoming listening session. So Larry?
Thanks, Dante. We have scheduled a public listening session for Wednesday, May 19th at 6 o'clock. And this listening session is designed to be similar to the public event we did back in January, where we had a large public attendance. We had call-in numbers in English and Spanish texting and so forth. But the purpose of this session is to share as many of the commission's recommendations as we can in a, in a succinct fashion and solicit the community's feedback on what it is that the commission has developed up to, up to now. The best way that I think we can do that is to have someone from the commission, representing each of the subcommittees, to work with me on, you know, a short couple of minute, not necessarily presentation, but a way for us to have dialogue and showcase some of what each subcommittee is recommending with the added note that we would make sure all recommendations were posted in a very easy-to-find part of our existing online forum, the slcrepcommission.com site, so that folks could read all of the detail. But I will be following up with the facilitators for each of the subcommittees to find someone from each subcommittee who'd be willing to be kind of a, a guest during the listening session to share some of the subcommittee's work and then to be on hand as commentators join the call and, and want to share their feedback. So we are, I think, planning to assemble for kind of a rehearsal, a, a run-through in about a week on Thursday. And so for folks who know that they'd be interested in having that kind of a, of a more active part in the session, please feel free to reach out to me through Coletta or directly. And we certainly would like to involve you, but again, we'd like to have at least three commissioners, one from each subcommittee who could help to walk the public through these recommendations. And again, it's Wednesday, May 19th, 6:00 PM, in place of full commission that evening.
Any questions, thoughts, comments for Larry on that? Okay, and please don't hesitate to reach out to him. In the interim, if you have some thoughts or questions or want to be supportive and help out in any kind of way. Why don't we, at this time, go backwards a little bit and see if there's any public comment available? Or anyone interested in making public comment?
Yeah, Dante, I noticed five folks on the Zoom that may have some comments. They're listed in alphabetical order by first name. So I see Angel Clayton.
Hello. No, no comment at this time. Thank you, though.
You're welcome. Beverly Hawkins are, are one of our regular attendees.
Hi, yeah, I do have a question. This is something that came up early in your meetings last fall and I've heard referenced a few times since, and that is the implicit bias survey of officers in SLCPD. And I'm just wondering if there's any progress for that or where that all stands.
I can speak to that. Josh, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. He asked about the bias training or survey.
Right, the survey.
Yeah, the survey, that's actually one of our recommendations tonight that we'll be making. And I've been working through that with Assistant Chief Dow and the subcommittee.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Miss Hawkins. Jenny Goff is on the line. Oh, okay. Jenny, did you have any comments?
I do not have any comments.
Thanks for being with us. And Jennifer Truskowski Smith, I don't know if I pronounced that right. Apologize, Jennifer. Any comments?
You did pronounce that correctly and I do not. Thank you.
Very well. And Dante, we don't have any callers at the moment, but if folks do want to call in during the course of the meeting, it's 800-934-9182, 800-934-9182.
Thank you. All right, now moving to policies and practices and their discussions and recommendations coming to the full commission.
I'll turn the time over to Steve Andrew Wearden. Just kidding, Steve.
We don't have time for me to do that and I still need 15 minutes to push back on Commissioner Prospero that I talk a lot. I need 15 minutes to explain that I don't talk a lot. So we have time for that.
We'll, we'll make time. We'll, we'll find time for you.
I appreciate it. I'll be happy to support you, Josh. I, he's a good recommendation for us all.
All right, great. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yeah, but you're also sharing your view of all the commissioners.
Which one are you seeing?
Commissioners are in the middle of your screen.
You can certainly see your desktop.
How about that?
There you go.
All right, I thought it was flipped, but all right, good. All right, so a few recommendations that have been developing over the last couple of months. In our last meeting, last week, we had a lot of good discussion. An hour and a half was a half hour over and I apologize, Dante, but we're, we're trying to solidify something. And so from that meeting, Luke Zimmeron, Shafan and I formulated what was discussed and put it into some drafts. And so we want to present something here and get input, feedback and response to one or more maybe ready to go and move forward, or we may need to reassess in subcommittee next week, which is fine. The first is related to the police officer body worn camera policy and procedure. We've had, again, chief and the PD, Mr. Cottrell, Sergeant Givens meet with the subcommittee multiple times. We reviewed the recent ordinance and, and made some conclusions here for your consideration. I'll just read it and follow along and then we'll open it up for additional comment from the subcommittee and then others. So Utah Code sets minimum standards for activation. And I also mentioned that we reviewed the Matrix report and recommendations as well and might reference those here in some part. So Utah Code sets minimum standards for activation, storage notifications and other body worn camera procedures. Body worn camera use in Salt Lake City Police Department is outlined in Policy 422, which is largely dictated by Utah Code 77-7A. Law enforcement use of body worn cameras and adopted in 2016. Additionally, the city council adopted Ordinance 54 on December 1, 2020, for the police department's use of body worn cameras that formalized as recent policies and executive orders guiding body worn camera use and footage release. The Racial Equity and Policing Commission believes the current policy and ordinance is part of a multifaceted approach the city is taking to examine internal systems and identify paths towards better accountability and equity. SLCPD's policy and ordinance match and exceed state law requirements with their use. Additionally, the commission found that the SLCPD is progressive in the use of their camera by, cameras by incorporating additional accountability and transparency beyond what state law requires. Examples include internal auditing and outside auditing, two levels of reports and random audits of footage. The commission supports the current body worn camera policies and ordinance and recommends SLCPD continue to strive to be the gold standard of best practices nationwide. Additional recommendations to achieve gold standard include Ordinance 54 requires a qualified individual outside of the SLCPD designated by the mayor to randomly review and audit body worn camera videos. The commission recommends that this position be identified and provided the necessary support and funding to perform these responsibilities. Specify, develop and establish how body worn cameras, camera reviews and audits are to be conducted and define uniform and consistent performance metrics and language. This should be done collaboratively with the current audit and inspection unit within SLCPD, led by Sergeant Mason Givens and the qualified outside body worn camera auditor. Strongly consider including audit all use of force reviews to determine if the reviews were conducted appropriately and if the outcomes are within policy. This includes canine incidents involving use of force. Increasing the random review of video by the outside qualified individual from five to 20 per month and include random sampling of officer videos as well as completed supervisor reviews. Publish the results of body worn camera audits and review audits annually. And finally, SLCPD is currently nationally accredited by the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. This requires compliance with 162 standards and only 4% of law enforcement agencies nationwide are accredited. Salt Lake City PD should strive for an advanced accreditation for 162 standards and explore the cost, resources and benefits of doing so. All right, questions, comments, additions first from subcommittee or law enforcement? All right, questions, comments from anybody else?
Reverend Davis, I have just a question that may be showing my ignorance, but in terms of activation of body cameras, is there something that says at what point an officer should activate that camera?
Yeah, Chief Brown, I'll defer to you on responding to that. Thank you, Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, Reverend Davis, there is both in state law and in policy. Anytime an officer is engaging with, with somebody in the public, it lists several different definitions of when that camera should be on, but that is definitely spelled out in state law and our policy, so.
And to add to that, I believe the Matrix report assessed the SLCPD compliance with that and it ranked very high nationally, if I'm not mistaken. Any other questions?
Thank, thank you.
Maybe just another comment that this also coincides with Matrix's recommendations that five random audits per month is not enough?
Yeah.
And that, oh, there was one more that, I forget what it was now, but it, it, this is in line with what also Matrix was recommending.
Yeah, exactly. Thanks, Dante. Five to 20 and then this was all, I mean, it's in the ordinance, but emphasized by Matrix, also by us and that to establish uniformity collaboratively, they develop this. And then again, this last bullet goes to the, the main desire of the subcommittee and members of the commission has been to achieve more transparency, accountability and to aspirationally be the gold standard or a model for the rest of the company. I also found that shared by SLCPD and hopeful that this might be a step to get there.
And maybe just another comment as it relates to what city staff have asked, that there might be a budget implication to this, if there's a, an outside evaluator of the cameras and other things. There might be a budget implications of this that might be well included within some type of recommendation.
Yeah, was that directed at me, Dante?
Just generally, the recommendations.
Yeah, I believe there's, they, there are certainly budget implications because there'll be this outside the PD auditor that'll need to be housed somewhere, mayor's office or somewhere, which will include costs.
I, on, on that, I, I believe this is already required, so we'd be throwing that additional time. Group over the number, because once, once it's established, we could make sure that they have the opportunity to look at both other audits. I, I strongly recommend increasing that or support the recommendation, increase that to 20. The part of our, our responsibility here is to establish or grow community trust. I felt a little low for me to be able to do that, be looking at other areas, so we've increased that. I also really like the idea of the publishing the results, both within the department and outside the department, because these training videos, the uses of force and the audits will be such a ripe opportunity to have additional training opportunities. In other words, is there a pattern that we need to address? Training, see if something develops. So I, anyway, I just wanted to highlight that section about that random sampling also sends a message that we're going, we're going to be looking, even if it hasn't come to our attention, still an opportunity that could, that it could come up. And I think that that will help build community, community trust.
Thank you.
Commissioner Andrew Warden, just real quick, I think when I was talking with Matrix, you could look at one video of, of an officer who may be assigned on a call that maybe all they did is hold traffic and there's no interaction with the public. I think Matrix was saying, not so much a video, but let's look at an incident that involves all the officers were on scene at that time. So I think that's the direction they're going to make to, to get a bigger view of, of the entire situation.
Can I, can I just add something? I just want to say that the information that Sergeant Givens provided to us regarding the
I just want to say that the information that Sergeant Givens provided to us regarding the logistics of the body camera was extremely useful and relevant to come up with these recommendations. And I got a lot out of it. So I just wanted to just say that information was very helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner McDonald, and attest to a lot of difficult questions were asked and he and Chief Brown were grilled and they brought information and shared data and responded to all the questions. All right.
Joshua?
Yes.
Um. As a pragmatist, what does that data storage look like? Is there limits to that? I just can't imagine how much data it takes up to have all those videos stored for who knows how long.
Yeah.
I think I think I saw somewhere where there's unlimited storage, but I man, I just find that hard to believe. Did anybody talk about that?
Yeah, great. Commissioner Powell asked about that a few times. Go ahead, chief.
I was just gonna say Commissioner Posteros, yeah, that the data storage is a big cost agencies, but we have funded our body more camera program to have unlimited data storage. So we can store as much as we want and keep it as long as we want according to law.
That's amazing. Wow.
Thank you, Commissioner Prispero. You're on mute, Dante. Yes, I gotta tell Dante he's on mute.
Put a dollar in the jar. So can I ask, what is the overall recommendation and ask for this particular one?
I guess it's two, one that know that the thorough assessment by the subcommittee of the policies and practices around body worn cameras and to make a statement on that and then to make a recommendation related to these three.
Okay. So I know there's the the committee has several of these, so why don't we just do these one at a time in case there's some questions about any particular one? So I would ask the commission if there's a any more discussion needed, is there or is there consensus that this recommendation should be moved forward to the mayor and city council? Is there a need for more conversation or discussion? If so, jump into it. You're on mute, Reverend.
I'm okay with moving it twelve.
Okay, thank you.
I second that.
Okay, thank you. So we'll do this officially like we just started earlier today. So it's been moved in second that this recommendation be accepted and move forward to the mayor and to city council. Okay, all in favor?
I. I.
Comes up. Okay, I all opposed? Okay, so recommendation number one is accepted. Thank you, Josh. Go for it.
All right, I'm gonna connect to this. I wanna do this. I know Commissioner Shiflett had a lot of input on this and was valuable in the discussion and she needs to jump off the call and get on a plane soon. So this has been discussed in full.
Getting on a plane. Another board meeting.
Oh, board seat board. I was thinking boarding. All right, he's going to a board meeting. Thank you. Commissioner Prispero also sent me some information, had some good questions related to this and so wanted to present this and open it up for discussion. And so there there has been discussion going back months on and we heard it from the public comment a minute ago regarding implicit bias survey and then working with or Chief Brown and Assistant Police Chief Doubt. We created this recommendation. Leverage the planned cultural assessment mentioned in the police department's crime control plan to incorporate an implicit bias survey. Selected key commissioners shall collaborate with Assistant Chief of Police Tim Doubt to finalize the survey and administer it by December thirty one, twenty twenty one. The survey shall be modeled after the Pew Research Center twenty sixteen National Survey of Law Enforcement Officers. The results shall be shared with the commission to inform next steps.
Just a question slash comment, given that we're talking about this survey not being the results not coming in until twenty twenty two. And we don't know the formation or formulation of the commission in twenty twenty two. You might add somebody else that this results are shared with, be it Chief Equity Officer, be it may, I mean, may have somebody that's not just the commission that might be able to do some work with it.
And make sure that the results, at least the people on the commission can see what the results are that we have access to it.
Excellent. Great. And let me ask Chief Brown if he'd up, I didn't, but I'd want to hit their input because it it sounded like from Chief Assistant Chief Doubt, this could be expedited by incorporating it into the crime control plan, but I I wasn't certain on the date with if it's feasible to do it in a month or six months or what is feasible in terms of a timeline.
Josh, I think we put placeholder in our crime plan for this very survey. I think as soon as we can develop the survey, I think we could expedite it within the department and probably have results back in maybe thirty to forty five days. And then the analysis of that, however, that the analysis of that would would take, I think we could probably get this done by I'm just guessing here, maybe two or three months.
Good.
Anybody have input that has to have done these surveys before? Maybe I'm I'm speaking out of turn or I don't know what I'm talking about, but I think if we could, if we could develop the survey, we could get it done.
That is another key consideration developing of the surveys Commissioner Prispero mentioned that in an email to me this, yeah, the 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 template or sample is pretty extensive and intended not to duplicate that, but to identify with the police department, the key questions that we want to ask, which I don't think will be too time consuming, but. That is consideration.
I mean, it seems that if you are modeling an existing survey in post in personalizing it for Salt Lake City it and have a dedicated staff of a few people. It it would appear to me that it would, it could be feasible within a quarter at the very least.
Right.
Because you don't, you're not, you're not necessarily reinventing the wheel if you if you have a template already.
All right.
Conduct these types of studies very commonly within political science. And they're not really all that hard to set up, you know, college students set surveys up and if we could even do it electronically to where an officer can do this in their their own home and not around other officers, I think that would be a conducive atmosphere as well. So we can definitely, I think, cooperate with the city and getting this done in a timely manner and efficiently as well if we have a dedicated staff to it.
So Josh, that was my question is who's gonna administer one developed survey and since you guys are thinking of a group, who's gonna administer it? Who's gonna clean the data and who's gonna analyze it and who's gonna write the report? Is all that falling on PD?
That's a great question. It would be a clap, it'd be identified key commissioners to do it jointly with the police department and so with full transparency.
Well, you you to clean the data, you you need someone who knows a statistician, basically, someone who knows how to 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 scrub data and that's that's a skill set that the average person doesn't have. So you want to make sure you have, yeah, you want to make you have good, clean data, data set and make sure that you're that a good sample sampling as well. So it's it's gonna require some skills and some work, but it is not, this happened. People do this a lot and the city does this a lot as well within what they do already is part of their everyday business. They surveys go out all the time. I get them. So there are people that can do this, whether or not they can allocate the resources for this would be the question. Because that that would probably be a budget item as well because you have, you may have to take them away from doing something else to dedicate to this. So it might be a follow up conversation regarding how this will will come about.
Yeah, so as Chief Brown, you said you put a placeholder in the plant control plan for this. Do you have a response to those questions?
Well, I I I'm listening to Commissioner Posteros and Commissioner McDonald. I think they're both right. I think this this needs to be done and it it probably should be done by somebody that a professional company or organization that actually does this. And then we can administer the survey electronically to every officer to take that. But then the information should probably be cleaned and put into a report. So this kind of goes back to the conversation that we had the other day, Commissioner Posteros, where we we were talking about having a professional company do it, maybe through HR within the city and to get a great product because that's what we want.
And if I could suggest a couple of things, one, I I don't know that it's an implicit bias survey versus a culture and climate survey, so maybe I'm misunderstanding what the questions are. Two, it needs to be administered completely externally, I would suggest, because cops aren't gonna answer the questions if they think that you're gonna be reading their responses. And so the questions need to go out and be returned to someone external to the PD who's then going to review and and do what they do with the data and write that report. So I mean, I wouldn't, I would specifically argue that the police department does not administer the survey and the results go back to it.
I was. I, oh, I haven't. And and also what Commissioner Powell said, the police should not be too involved in this. And also, I think by doing it electronically, they do, you know, you give them a deadline to get it done and they can do it in the privacy of their own home. And they have time to think about it. So we just have to set a deadline that we would like it completed. But I I think that that would allow for more trust and not somebody walking over their shoulders.
Yeah, you you want to make sure when something like this is done, I mean, we we do this all the time in corporate America where I work that the the participants understand that it is anonymous as well. That's the only way you're gonna get them to be honest about it. And they have to trust that it's actually anonymous at the same time.
Yeah.
I agree.
All right, so does the this capture the 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 key commissioner, the Keith Doubt, to finalize the survey question set and coordinate administration of it by August and it should be administered by a third party. What else do we need to add to this to capture then the additional needs?
So Josh, I'm I'm going back to Dante's statements. I think it should be developed from the police department with us having no inputs. So, you know, we don't have any 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 part of it. And that way it's a, we'll just provide the link or they can provide the link through our our email system so that officers can go on there and and take that. So when it says administered by a third party, maybe developed and administered by a third party?
Yes, that's what I was gonna say. It should be a developed, administered, analyzed and finally should be disseminated by the third party.
I agree with everything Commissioner Prispero just said.
Second that.
Great. And maybe I missed Chief Doubt when he collaborate with. I guess he still intended to be involved. That's good clarification. Great.
And who do, who is it shared with? I just think the commission is a pretty narrow. I mean, I don't go to more than that, I'm sure, but.
I think it should be shared with all stakeholders in the public.
I propose the initial result results are initially shared with the Chief Equity Officer within the mayor's office so they can make that initial directive of approaching any cultural bias there is there. And I think within that framework as well too, it gives the city an initiative to kind of take the responsibility on it a little more because, you know, you know, the police department is an executive portion of the mayor's office. So I think, you know, Chief Brown and Mayor Menden Hall in coordination with the Chief Equity Officer would be able to make any final decisions with those results with an outside party organization or Chief Brown's asking for that. I agree with that. The same way we brought matrix in is probably the same way officers would feel more respected and also transparent in their efforts. And Commissioner Shiflett, thank you for also piggybacking off of the the point like it doesn't even need to be an outside group necessarily as much as the city or interns within the city could set up a Google poll. And that's not insanely difficult to do. So you can measure those results both statistically too. We can break down how many officers we have within the department. It can also break down within that framework too is like which intent. I think the intent is the hardest thing within the initial polling of like, how can we express to officers that this isn't an initiative that is meant to lead to more progression and more understanding. I feel like a lot of officers right now at the get go might kind of view it as like a more of a personalized statement. So my suggestion would be to actually just keep it. I want to hire an outside group, but I feel like that might attract and push like Dante's saying into December and I don't know if we have that time. So I would, I suggest maybe looking into a Google poll option with city staff.
So Commissioner Powell, just to follow up for clarification, you would define as here a third party being any anybody but the Salt Lake City Police Department?
Yeah, I think the mayor's office should be able to handle that information and they should want that information. And then they can decide what to do with it from there on out with the Chief Equity Officer at that point because we don't know if this commission will be here at that point. And that is one of my main concerns.
Commissioner Powell's comments, I I like that. Maybe the commission, key commissioner can work with Deborah Alexander, who is the HR director internally, which may expedite the process a little bit quicker and then and then you'd have somebody internally helping push this thing forward.
Perfect. I agree with that. Thank you, chief. Can you repeat her last name for me? Deborah?
Deborah Alexander. I can provide contact information to Josh and commission.
Thank you.
And I would also explicitly state that the data would be disaggregated by race and ethnicity. And then if you wanted to talk about gender, sexual orientation, whatever that might be, but specifically that is disaggregated by race and ethnicity.
I I worry of putting something like this on some other staff members' plate. Could just maybe this new person that comes in or the but this, this is not something that can just easily be done. I know people are saying that. I do these all the time and they're not easily done, especially if you want professional outcomes and recommendations. These I worry about giving this to another staff member that has their plate full and something else they have to do. Because that may be put at the end of their priority list because they gotta get their tasks done. So so I worry about that. I understand that, you know, bringing a third party in, but if you get. You know, just say, you, 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 you is what we're going to do. That may fall. Again, it's at the end of their list and the quality of the report may not be all that good.
What do you think of the chief equity officer position, Moises?
I again, I don't know if they'll have the capacity to do something like this. And and their skills, their skill level may be. I don't know if they know statistics and. I that that's my concern and being. In government where I often got thrown stuff at me. And it's like, okay, I got to figure out how to do this. I don't know how, but I'll. I'll wing it. The quality of work that came out of that for me was not very good. So. That's my only concern about doing something like that.
Yeah. Well, I think the ask is to be able to provide funds. For a third party to do this. I mean, that's part of the ask.
Yes.
Yeah, I I agree with you. On all everything that Commissioner said. I have a big concerns about this.
All right, so I hear several people and others agreeing with body language that the third party should be. A party outside the PD and city staff and funded. Is that what I'm hearing?
I I think we should also clarify that we should agree upon who that third party is or have. At least commissioners from this commission invited in approving who that entity is. I don't feel comfortable inviting a third party hired by. An institution to observe. Its own implicit bias training. So it's not.
I agree.
All right, does that capture? Commissioner Powell?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, are we closer to kind of final ask on this? Any further thoughts, comments?
Let me let me. Does that? Do we need directions then if it's through a third party? On how the results will be shared? Or who they'll be shared with? Do you want to specify that?
Should the the results be shared with the chief equity officer who within also share the result with the council? The city council and the mayor?
And maybe the commissioners if we're there still. But you see.
The major stakeholders, yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor's office, council, the commission. Judge Nicole Salazar Hall. Spreading rumors, spreading rumors.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and then the Department of the Public.
Yeah, Reverend Davis speaking. The department needs this information too, don't they?
All right, yes, the the result.
DIT team.
With the whole world. How's that?
There we go. Definitely the new therapist or mental health care provider within the department as well. I don't know if individual statistics, like they they won't be gathered anyways, so. Never mind.
All right, any other? Comments? Suggestions? Doubts? Dante, you've mentioned something about the data and the report of that. I don't think I captured that.
I mean, I don't know there needs to be in the in here specifically. I mean, if we're going to, if the commission and others are going to evaluate who. They can set the criteria by which the expectations are for the disaggregation of that was my point.
Okay. We want a date on this deadline. We were talking. August. We want to put that on there as a recommendation timeline.
I don't know if you want to necessarily make it a mandated thing to be done by a certain date, maybe have. Like selections for the commission to approve by August 1st. If that's plausible, but I feel like we should ask the city when they think. That could be done. If we could also set up maybe a a a meeting with the policies and practices subcommittee for next week, maybe we could get that done.
All right, so we're move this forward as is and we can discuss timeline. Perhaps at our next meeting, Commissioner Powell? All right.
Any other? Suggestions or edits to the language?
Just curious about these policies. Bring in a third party if this would have to be RFP would slow us down. So. You may want to be thoughtful about the dollar amount. In terms of the timeframe. And and just just a brief. Pete Josh, just the way it's written where the survey shall be funded, et cetera. Think we mean that the city shall fund it and then the third party will develop, administer, analyze and disseminate. Way it's written now, though, third party will also fund it.
Thank you.
And a question to city staff, is there a dollar amount under which you can do a sole source? And what would that limit be?
Dante, this is Coletta. Unfortunately, I am unaware, but I can find out for you all.
Okay.
And and maybe we can incorporate that into our our timeframe discussion back in the subcommittee, but I think just something if you were.
Yeah, good point.
Dante, I just got a notification from another staff member. It is forty thousand dollars.
Okay, so thirty nine nine, you can do a sole source. Okay.
Commissioner McDonald. Thirty nine thousand nine hundred ninety nine.
That was good.
That pricing sound good to everyone? That kind of makes me bite my tongue a little bit, makes me question my my Google poll surveys, you know?
All right, then we get to move forward, Dante.
Asking the commissioners. Do we have consensus that this is ready to move forward? Anyone opposed to moving this forward? Okay, all in favor of moving forward?
Aye.
All right, I think you're good to go with number three, Josh.
And can I just reiterate, Josh set it up front, but Commissioner Shiflett. Really pushed for this, and I know she had to leave a little another call, but. I just want to acknowledge her. Specific effort to get it this recommendation.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Commissioner and we're in and Commissioner Prespero also. For looking at researching and asking good questions. All right. Um, I, yeah. Did somebody say my name?
Yes, sir. Take it to number next one.
All right. So this has been discussed in full commitment. The training subcommittee. And. The policy practices subcommittee. And there have been several emails. I know Chief Brown's also had discussions with several commission members. Community based training on history of policing. And so. The city and others that asked for some specifics and. Dante. Drafted this. And so Dante, why don't, why don't you read that? Comes across in your voice and then we can have discussions about it. Is that okay?
Sure. Thank you. The original kind of ask was about. Training on the history of Salt Lake City and its communities of color. And I said, that's not enough. It needs to be a much bigger understanding of the history of communities of color in the United States. And its relationship with people of color and those impacts. And it should be co-coach facilitated, co-trained. By a community member knowledgeable and involved in equity work as well as an officer, sergeant lieutenant or above. Because, I mean, cops want to be able to say they are listening to another officer doing this work as many times as I've seen it and done it. It's it's really helpful to co to co-lead it. It should be also not just a one and done in the academy, but ongoing work in the in-service trainings that are happening as well. And obviously, the content would evolve after everyone has gone through the first session in the academy. Utah Highway Patrol has a has a model that they use to train all of their officers on all shifts. And it took them, I forget what they said, almost nine months to go through that training. But it was well well received. The history is a mix of history and and present day examples of. Legal and social impacts. Understanding and with examples institutional racism and bias, what that looks like, how it impacts and what those outcomes are. Currently, as well as historically. And also a place in a space for officers and and to speak candidly. Similar to the dialogues, but there would be no commissioners there. They would be all either recruits or officers during in-service, but to speak candidly. And and share their experiences and their thoughts. And have that opportunity for engagement, because otherwise it's just going to be. It's just going to feel like a hammer. And so how do we ensure that it's not done with any blame, shame, guilt? In this presentation, but the opportunity for just understanding and professional development. So they can do what they do in a better way to better serve the community. And then. I think that was pretty much the gist of of it.
Yes, excellent. So I'll open that up because I know there have been some other discussions and Chief Brown has met with others and I know from our last call, he had some specifics on. You know, your vision for it and doing it twenty different times. So is there? I'll open it up to the commission and. Others.
And also, it's not just everybody wants to talk about implicit bias, but it has to be about institutional and systemic bias. Not just one's personal bias, because nobody's going to say they are anything except great. But what is the.
I second that.
Does the institution look like and how is it biased? Thanks.
The question that I wanted to ask is, is this a part of? Regular, ordinary training or is this an additional item of training that would be required?
Commissioner Davis, if I could speak for just a minute, I. I I felt very strongly that I wanted to get with the commissioners and. The reason I felt that is this is this this training is very important to us. We can't miss with this. And I wanted. I wanted your feedback and your input as we develop this. Dante, I appreciated your comments that you put in that email. It took us to heart. I think, Josh, you provided some some comments too. But the way I look at this. Commissioner Davis is this is part of our our new hire training, our lateral hiring training. And then, just like Dante says, this becomes part of our in-service training yearly and where we talk about it, because it can't be one and done. This is a conversation that needs to keep to keep going. So. I I reached out to Commissioner Prosperos and Commissioner Andrew Warden and Commissioner Hawkins. And we sat down and talked about it. And and Commissioners, maybe you want to weigh in as to some of the suggestions you had and where we went with it, but. I think it really, we really dialed into a good place. And and I think it's something that. When we talked about it, it may be something that might be good for the entire city. I'm not saying. We would, we're going to dilute it down and not have those conversations about policing, because that's where it started. But. I think we talked about maybe getting HR, Deb Alexander and her team to help us develop this. And help, you know, help us facilitate this, but we really need community members. Just like Dante's talking about to have those hard hard conversations. We can't have those conversations with ourselves. We need to have the reality of having somebody in that room and talking with us back and forth and sharing, you know, ideas and concerns. Just having that conversation. So Commissioner Prosperos or Commissioner Andrew Warden, do you want to weigh in on a little bit of our discussion?
I'll let Steve talk since he hasn't been able to speak much today. Dr. Prespero, thank you for yielding. Or let me say everything. Ongoing, evolving as we learn about it. You said, chief, including the laterals and academy folks. Set that foundation immediately upon coming into the department. This is the way we do things in Salt Lake City. These are the expectations. And I think that that really goes to the cultural change that we're looking for. Commission set that foundation as soon as they come in. And I agree with Dante, he can't end it, right? Has to be part of ongoing in-service training. And and it's already been said, but it can't be one and done. It has to continue. And. Police officers learn. These officers are conditioned through training. Find the takeaways to how does this connect to my job? And I recommend that we, for there's an element that the closer you can be to the community, the more effectively you can police a community. And that's how it impacted out, right? So I think we have to find that connection to help them be successful. Getting the information. And then finally. We discussed. Having that unity person. embedded with the training unit. Put in an equity lens on all the training that is going on. So that we don't have this nice little subset, and that's our cultural awareness or our cultural competency. Lens should be involved in all the different training and it should have a set of eyes from the community on it as well. Please understand their tactics really well, but sometimes what gets lost in that is how to serve the community, right? When we're looking at both tactics. So that should be a part of it, too. That's my recollection of what we discussed. When we say Sir Canyon, do you have other pieces that you recall?
No, I I think you covered it well.
So question to you then and others is, does you know that intent is captured here? Commissioner Andrew Weirden, is there additional language we want to include to to specify? In the in the recommendation?
I think, Josh, that it we need to somehow. Put in the recommendation that it be done early in the. Process in the hiring timeframe. And I don't know what that means, but I think somehow we need to do this. The first month or the first year or whatever. But it needs to be done early.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Davis. Chief Brown, how how can we incorporate that in? What would that language look like in terms of your processes and onboarding? Of new officers?
Josh, I'm just trying to think. I I I envision it being part of. One of the first classes that we have with with them to, you know. We bring them in to our academy. And HR comes in and talks about different things. We talk about the admin comes in and talk, but I. I think it should be just like Commissioner Davis is talking. It should be within. The first thirty days. I hate to put a time limit on it, but it should be. In their academy before they ever go to FTO or reach the streets. I'm trying to envision how we say that.
The way that you just said it. I, you know. And I don't want to take too much time on what I'm about to say, but this particular issue speaks so closely to my heart. That I I hold it very dear and close to my heart. I think it is so very, very, very important. I mean, we've all heard heard the quote, those who fail to learn from the history are doomed to repeat it. And this is one of those things. So like what you just said, if it's part of the onboarding process. If people, we want. People who really want to serve. The community that they are charged with. To to be in law enforcement. That's part of the way that we can. Rectify. Or at least get on the right track of of where we're going in that whole reimagining. Policing and what it looks like for communities of color. So this this speaks very, very close to my heart. So I just, I just wanted to just say that.
Thank you, Commissioner McDonald. Does the language capture your desires and your intent and hope for? This training? Is there something specific you'd like? This training? Is there something specific you'd like included additionally?
No, I, I, I think everything that has been said thus far is his to nail. I always say that quote wrong. But nails it. Okay, I'll leave it like that. Um, the input that has been provided thus far is, is, is spot on.
Thank you, Commissioner McDonald. Um, others?
I think we have a University of Utah, um, right here, and I think we have well-qualified educators that should be at this table. Um, in terms of developing curriculum. So I think we should also reach out to the people like again, surveys, students know how to do surveys. Racial, um, history, Pastor Davis was a professor at the University of Utah. So I'm not really hearing any input though about bringing those people who are community members and qualified community, can, community members. Uh, into the conversation and that's kind of irking me. Solely because we're not going to be able to change the, the perspective of law enforcement individuals with. I think other law enforcement individuals teaching them that history. So again, I think we need commissioners that I'm not a. I, I don't have a doctorate, you know, and. African-American studies, but I think we should have someone that does there. And I think that we don't need to necessarily keep throwing funds at the situation because I think that's detracting from. The intent of what we're trying to establish in the first place.
Thanks.
Commissioner, does the, so then how would you rephrase what's already here that it should be co-facilitated with a community member of color? Knowledgeable and involved in equity work? You, you're muted if you're speaking.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
We, we can't hear you.
I would suggest that, uh, someone who has a PhD and has experience teaching. That way we can ensure that the, I'm sure these people already have a developed curriculum established. Um, and I think they can co-operate with the police department in the best ways that they can disseminate it and use it, but I don't think. Like again, um, just like one of my main concerns is. I think we need a survey and this is a different proposal, but. I wasn't anticipating we were going to be spending up into the multiple thousands of dollars for a simple survey that college students such as myself can do. Um, so my intent with this is to make sure that we have commissioners such as myself or other individuals. And the community such as Pastor Davis reach out to, um, their other networks to see who would be willing to volunteer to come and do this on their own time.
That's a big ask and, and I would also push back on a PhD because. There's a big difference between teaching and facilitating a conversation. And PhDs tend to teach, not facilitate.
Yeah, I, I think with the curriculum though, I thought we were hoping to teach. Because, um, there, there will be a sense of white fragility in that room. To the response of that, and that's natural even in my spaces as a university student here. Um, so as much as we need someone to facilitate the space, um, we need an educator who. Is not necessarily concerned with the, the feelings. Of the demographics they're teaching because those people are there for a job. My professors don't necessarily care about my feelings when they're teaching me these subjects and rooms. They're not facilitating them. They're educating me. Um, so I think officers should be educated as well and not facilitated when it comes to the curriculum. That's my, that's my perspective.
No, I appreciate that. I, I just, I think we're having a difference of semantics. I'm not suggesting that they're not being taught something they don't know. I'm just suggesting a PhD narrowing into field to a PhD narrows the field. And I don't think that's what you want to do.
Yeah, that, that's kind of, that's my concern and Jen, I absolutely agree with you, Commissioner Powell, that it. There does need to be someone who's absolutely qualified, but the, the qualification isn't, doesn't necessarily have to be a PhD and. And really, uh, I, I do take issue with, um, not worrying about feelings and, and trust me, I'm a lawyer. I don't deal in feelings. I, I am in an emotionally charged field of work, but I, I don't deal in feelings. I'm not a feelings kind of person. But what we are going to be dealing with is we are going to be. Having to confront that white fragility and that is very difficult. You are a willing student. You're wanting to learn this. We're going to have some officers who do not want to learn this.
Should they be officers though, if they don't want to understand the impact of that?
I get that. I agree.
That's why I was protesting last year.
I, I totally agree with that, but are they going to say that? They're not going to say that. They're just going to listen. Act like they're taking it in and then nothing's going to happen. So we, what we want to do is we want to have some change, right? We want to get to those officers who feel like they don't have a problem. Who are afraid to con, confront that white fragility. It's not easy. It's hard. It's hard to confront my own, own privilege and. And fragility in, in this conversation. And I'm a willing participant and ready to recognize that I have shortcomings, but if you have someone who is very rigid in their view and their worldview that maybe they. They don't have a problem. This is somebody else's problem. How do we get to them? That to show them that they, they do need to change and it's not because they're a bad person. It's. It's just how they were raised and let's, let's make a change for the better. That's, that's my only concern with having just a PhD who's not worried about feelings. We need to have someone who's able to get to people like that because I'm not worried about the ones who are already there and, and willing to say, okay, I want to do this work. They're absolutely officers on, on the SLCP, SLTPD who are there and that is absolutely fantastic. Let's get to the rest of them. The ones who, who aren't quite there yet are having trouble getting there. If we, we talk at them, they're not going to get anywhere. Might go the opposite.
I agree. Thank you for giving me that perspective, Commissioner Salazar. I, I think that was, um, more introspective in terms of helping identify the intent. Of the curriculum established, um, because I know there, there are officers. I, I, that probably don't have the same. Perspective when it comes to that. My. I think this just goes back to even our private conversations of the mutual misunderstandings we identified there and how can we. Like sorry commissioners, I apologize, my roommate. That was extremely unprofessional. So I think it's communicating the intent. And I'll go ahead and end there. I apologize.
Oh, that's, oh, thank you, Commissioner Powell and Commissioner Salazar Hall. I was just going to comment the, we, we have had discussions with Utah Highway Patrol. Who did a similar training and, um, it is a, a process and. They have had great results even from officers that initially didn't think they needed it or wanted it or. They should have it. So I added qualified there, not too broad, but a qualifier. And so I'll ask if there are any other comments or additions or questions?
I, I have a question and it hopefully is not too vague, but. You said they had great results. How are the results measured?
That is a great question. I'm looking at some notes here. I think that the results were anecdotal. From those we talked to, so. You know, officers coming to, um, the trainers and telling them that. You know, the second time around how it changed. How they, uh, approached a vehicle or how they thought about things or. Policed, though I don't know that they're tracking it, Commissioner McDonald, like there's. Data on that, but it more, more anecdotal. That'd be a, a good question to ask.
Josh and commissioners, would you mind if I, uh, gave myself an assignment to contact Commissioner Anderson? Who's over UHP and, and, and just visit with him about the training and then. Ask if we can maybe get a, uh, a lesson plan as to what was taught that we could review and, and, and maybe with some of the key commissioners and then. Move on from there or help develop what we're going to do.
Yeah, uh, chief, we talked with O ten and Alex Lepley. And so, yeah, that, that'd be great.
Did they give you a lesson plan, Josh? Did they share, share what they thought?
Um, Commissioner Schifflet connected us and, um, shared. I'll share with you what she gave me. And she knows the instructors and, um, who they are. And this was three months ago.
Yeah.
I'll share with you.
So it sounds like we have. A document to work with. I'll also say this, we have lost our quorum. So cannot take any official action from this point forward. So I would suggest if we craft this language in, in the best way that we can. Next time we return together. Can it be an easy? Yes or no? So we've already got two, but now the last two, we can't move forward on an official.
Yes. No worries. We, we selfishly hogged the whole meeting and so we can share the other recommendations and, and continue to. Refine them in our subcommittee meeting next week.
Right.
But they're related to co-response mental health. And then. Call diversion dispatch. So look, that's just a teaser.
Okay, okay. So if, uh, if you could send that out. To everyone, they could have a chance to review, digest and come prepared to, um, offer any thoughts, suggestions and maybe pretty quickly on getting the, the last two. All done. But in the interim, the first two recommendations you provided have been approved by the commission and can be moved forward to the mayor and city council.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, moving, I know, uh, the next presentation, the presenter has to leave shortly. So it's about the resolution that we had addressed before. That was going to city council and mayor. And it's, uh. On the agenda, it's entitled white coats for Black Lives Matter and just need to state that. There's a clarification in terms of that title because the, um, the group never completed, um, and coordinated. With elected officials and requested the city consider the resolution and they, those that did doesn't, don't have an official title, the title. I'm not sure where it came from. But that's not their official title. And so Kevin Nguyen, who's a member of the group, uh, is here to share. Of the group and what the group is, but also thoughts on the resolution that, uh, is before you this evening. So, uh, Mr. Nguyen.
Awesome. Thank you Dante and good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for. Giving me the space and time to come and share this really important resolution that. Our team and a few members of, uh, the Salt Lake City team have been working on. So my name is Kevin Nguyen. Uh, I am. A community person. I get to also work in the public health sector, currently working at the Utah Department of Health. And various other, uh, community organizations to really drive. And address, uh, the health disparities and inequities that we're seeing in our communities. And this group, um, that helped put together this resolution was originally formed by a big, big community advocate. Her name was Margarita Satini. Actually, this is, this is her poster and. And you know, with COVID. She, she organized the first meeting and wasn't able to make to the second meeting. And, um, a, a few of us got together recently to try to. Start up this effort again in her honor to be able to do what she wanted to do and that was create a community oriented approach. In addressing racism as a public health and, and moral crisis. And this is such a, an important thing to address, especially during COVID. We know that there's a, really a growing body of research. That has shown that centuries of racism within this country, within our state, even within our, our cities and counties. Has led to really a profound and negative impact on our communities, specifically our communities of color. And this impact is so pervasive and, and embedded in our societies and changes. And impacts the way people live, the way they learn, the way they grow, um, you know, preach worship. And plays a big driver in what we call the social determinants of health, right? The social drivers of disease. And this is why we're seeing even within Salt Lake City, life expectancy differences of up to nine to 10 years between different cities. You know, if you're looking at Rose Park Glendale, you're living 75, 76 years on average. And if you live in the Salt Lake City avenues, you're living closer to 87 years. Why is that? And this is just. You know, we can spend the whole time talking about why is there that life expectancy gap? But really this is where this group has come together to be able to, uh, build out this resolution that helps us recognize and highlight. Yeah, racism as a big driver and why we see these enough health inequities. So within this resolution, we put together, uh, statements from a national perspective, recognizing racism as. A, a determinant of health, looking at why, uh, what drivers of racism that impacts health, the many key factors highlighting some. Utah Salt Lake, uh, city. Facts from the Utah Department of Health showing, uh, racial and ethnic health disparities because of racism. And then lastly, just highlighting what we hope the city and the council and everyone who's involved with this work. Is going to be able to do to try to address this, um, as an overall group. And really our hope is to, um, be able to not only get the support of all of you on this commission. Being able to declare this resolution, but also have the city council and the mayor. Uh, be able to declare this so that we can begin this really, really crucial work. In breaking down the structures and the policies and the programs that, uh, were built on racism and be able to then. Equitably provide for our, uh, communities, um, throughout the city of Salt Lake. And I don't know if you all have any questions or comments on that.
Well, first of all, um. Margarita was my girl. That was, she was, she was my heart. So I appreciate, um. The work that you, that you're doing, that you are continuing her work and. I just want to say thank you. She, she was definitely about eliminating racism within the community. She worked hard to give a life for it. So I, I appreciate you 100%.
Thank you, darling. And this effort, I, most of my team is not here today. I don't have anyone on my team is here today, but this was. A very team oriented approach and I get honor of being able to speak for my team today. Um, and I'll make sure I express, um, your thanks to them.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. I, I would suggest one, since we can't make an official decision, I apologize, Mr. Nguyen, that we can't give you that this evening. And I would also suggest commissioners that. Um, however, it, it, well, this isn't the final language or is it? At this point, Mr. Nguyen, or you're also asking for some thoughts on it?
Yeah, I believe the revisions that have been made on there are the final one for, for you all. I don't know if you all have any feedback on it?
Thank you. And hopefully you had a chance to look at it, commissioners. If not. You know, it gives all the whereas's, et cetera, but specifically calls out racism as a public health crisis. And, and a particular public health issue in the city of Salt Lake. And then provides the resolves of what will be done, which is work with mental health, community, county health partners to address institutional racism. Find data, disaggregate the data, et cetera. So do some very specifics of what to do. And so, um. I would suggest if all of those things resonate with you. Maybe the specifics of the wording. Not to wordsmith, but to, uh, address the, the intent and the power of the resolution itself. And that we could make, if it's not too late. A formal, uh, decision for you. Uh, in a few weeks. I'm not sure when you were trying to move this forward, Mr. Nguyen.
Yeah, our goal is to really make sure that number one is. The language and the structure and what we want to express to, um, the council and the mayor, but most importantly, our communities. Are, are strong, are sure and are actionable. So if that takes a few weeks, then please, you know, please give your, your expertise and your thoughts on that and we'd love to be able to. Um, have everyone come together to build this as one.
Thank you. Commissioners thoughts? Okay.
Oh, sorry. Thank you for what you're doing. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
So I would suggest that, um, all the commissioners can take a, maybe a final look on the document that they have. With them and come prepared to give you a full commission, yes, vote at our next meeting.
Thank you so much Dante and thank you commissioners and everyone who was part of this group. Really appreciate you, um, spending time to review that. Thank you so much, Dante. And thank you commissioners and everyone who was part of this group. Really appreciate you, um, spending time to review that, provide your input and to be part of this process. It's, it's a great honor to be here and, uh, please reach out if anyone has any questions or, um, possibly wants to be part of this group, uh, as we continue our work addressing racism and health inequities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Truly thank you for the work you're doing and, and, uh, moving this forward. Okay, um, I want to, Matt, I don't want to not do a debrief on the dialogues that were held. Because if we don't do it tonight, it's going to be over a month before we can actually do it. And I really hesitate to do that. And that said, um, the officers aren't really on the call. Officer Norga- Norgard is here. Um, is the only, I think, officer who was able to attend those. But that said, I think it's still important for the commissioners to speak and offer their thoughts and perspectives on what they heard and how they were engaged with and how they engaged. But I will leave that up to you as well. I don't know if you don't want to do it if the officers are not also here. So I'll turn it over to Larry to see what the thoughts on the commissioners are and move forward with the debrief of the dialogue.
Dante, if I could, I, I think I was just gonna share a couple of my own thoughts, um, before getting into the discussion. If that's okay with you.
Good, yes.
I, I just want to publicly commend all of the participants in those small group dialogues for the level of uh, vulnerability, candor and courage that I saw across all four of the sessions that I was privileged to facilitate. I think that the commissioners spoke in, in, in great detail, I was going to say excruciating detail in certain cases about experiences that they had had with police, whether in or outside of Salt Lake City, uh, in ways that I know were painful to relive, re-traumatizing. A number of the officers also spoke about their own encounters with other police when they may have been uh, questioned or stopped as a civilian. Um, but then they further shared their experiences as officers and the power and the significance of their service to them. I felt at the conclusion of all four dialogues that while I can't know for sure who understands whom and to what degree, uh, I think some very important truths were surfaced and shared. I think that the commissioners were able to articulate to the officers that they have had experiences with police that have been difficult. The officers were able to share with the commissioners that, um, they have worked hard to serve their communities as best they can. And I tried, hopefully with some success to, you know, demonstrate to you all that both things are true. Officers can feel a great deal of conviction in the quality of their service and the strength of their systems. And commissioners can feel, um, deeply upset by the way that they and members of their families and/or communities have been treated in the past, whether by this police department or others. So all of that is very difficult to hear and some of it is very difficult to say. And it is again, for those reasons that I think that, that everybody who participated is, is worthy of, of high praise. But I'm here just to, uh, create some space for what I call brave space, or what I heard someone else call brave space, for anyone to share any uh, reflections they've had since those sessions were held. Reverend Davis?
Uh, thank you. I was particularly, uh, impressed with the, uh, lessons that I learned from people like, uh, Officer Scott, as well as, uh, Commissioner Suarez and others. Uh, and I think that, uh, the more we have those kind of conversations, the more healthy the department will be in terms of doing its work. So I've, uh, appreciate what we, uh, learned and would hope that we continue to have those kind of discussions. Uh, and maybe even if, when the commission is no longer here, have those kind of, uh, lessons. Uh, they were hard to hear in many cases, but, uh, I mean, I learned some things, uh, myself. But, uh, one of the things that I learned is that, uh, many of the experiences of others are different, but very similar in terms of nature to those that others on the commission have had. So I appreciate the mayor, the, uh, city council and the chief appointing this group, uh, and giving us this assignment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend. Darling, Commissioner McDonald.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna start this off with a, with a disclaimer. I, I am feeling a bit emotional at the moment. Seeing the picture of, uh, my dear friend, Margarita, who we lost, um, has really touched me. So the, the conversations that we had with the officers were helpful, useful, hard. And I do wish that we had more on this call tonight. I think that it is imperative that we continue the dialogue with them. Because s- some of the things that was said in our small group has stayed with me. And I feel should be addressed with a couple of the officers. Even, I mean, I attended a, a, um, round table basically last night with, um, a congressman. And there were some officers there. I don't think they were part of, uh, Salt Lake City Office, um, Police Department. But some of the things that was said really hit me that they, i- i- it seems to be a us against them mentality when it's not. It really is an understanding of where we are. And those conversations are not being had. And there are lots of officers who feel threatened, their job, this is their job, their livelihood, how they're gonna support their families. And you have these people and primarily black people or people of color who is coming out for them, out, coming to, to them. When that is not as that, that is not what's happening at all. So my takeaway from the small group discuss discussions, especially when it comes to the discussion around compliance and complying, I believe needs to go further and we need to discuss that further with the officers because we, we, we dropped it. And so if, and I understand it's going to be further into the future and people don't want to keep rehashing the past. But, um, I think the conversation should be had. It, it probably won't be had on this call because we don't have many of them here with us today. But we need to have this conversation because there's just too much that is being missed. And we're talking past each other. And if we're talking past each other and not talking to each other, then we're never gonna get to where we need to be to make things better. So if we can just schedule it again, I don't care, but it needs to happen.
Wise words, Commissioner McDonald.
I concur with Commissioner McDonald. There, there was, um, in some of the conversations, a distinct, feeling that compliance was the only issue. Putting the onus of not being injured, shot, killed was on the, the person interacting with law enforcement. It was a distinct minimization of, uh, the history of racism and policing and some of the commissioners' direct experiences with law enforcement. That was difficult. That was quite difficult. And, and so people know, I, I really haven't had any negative interactions with law enforcement. I, I was actually, I had the opposite. My cousin was the, uh, was in charge of the security at, at Matheson Courthouse for quite some time. So I actually got special treatment as, as, uh, Sergeant Suarez's little cousin. But it was still hurtful to hear, um, and to see some of my fellow commissioners have their experiences minimized by if only you comply. If only you comply, then, then you'll be okay. When, when we know that's, that's not entirely accurate. And if that's something we're getting in a small group conversation, I'm concerned that that's only the tip of the iceberg of what's there. I know there's already a bit of a, a community view of, of why are we, um, looking at equity? This is a problem with defendants. This isn't a problem with our police. And I, I am concerned over how many law enforcement feel the same way. I, I don't know for certain, but th- the training that we discussed that we weren't able to pass tonight as a recommendation is something that I, I do believe after being involved in those conversations needs to be a priority and must happen very quickly. I'm not going to name those officers' names. I, I think they were very, very brave to, uh, join in these conversations, um, and, and to have these conversations with them. And I, I agree with Commissioner McDonald. This is not a nest versus them. I don't want anyone to get fired. I, I just want law enforcement to safely, uh, protect and serve everybody in the community and have the community feel safe to call law enforcement.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Salzer Hall. I, I just want to, I guess, remind everyone that we made the decision to conduct the sessions in private to allow for, um, as much candor and transparency as, as we could. And I want to encourage folks to share their own personal takeaways, uh, while at the same time, just, um, remembering that folks, um, join the sessions as, as that, as private conversations, uh, in a way. So I know that it's a tricky balance to strike, but just want to encourage that.
I wanted to piggyback off of Darlene, um, in terms of being an emotional day. I, I don't know if anyone knows what today is aside from this, um, which I don't celebrate Cinco de Mayo, but today is, um, is our Missing Murdered Indigenous Awareness, um, Day here, but it's a cry. So it's also being an awareness across the nation. Um, that's why I'm wearing red. My discussion, it, it was, it was very difficult. Um, afterwards I had to just shut down and just rethink and recollect myself because what I'm saying, it really gives, it's really, it's, it's difficult to, to muster up and, and come out in the open and talk about my forms of trauma, my forms of what I feel when engaging an officer or just seeing a police officer. Um, but also what my community has expressed. And right now it's just me as a native woman in this, in this conversation. Well, in that conversation we had. And when, we always talk about in our native communities about our ancestors that are behind us. And I fill that with my ancestors because we have historical traumas, which are still relevant to this day, uh, here in the state of Utah. Um, we're on the top 10 list of missing murdered indigenous women. But yet, um, when I talk about these issues and I talk and discuss with different agencies or just someone that's, that needs, was, you know, wanting to know about native communities and issues, they don't even know about these things. Um, even boarding school issues, um, law enforcement, so many things. And it's not in our history. That's the one thing. That's the reason why it's not in history. And so one of the police officers couldn't understand that or fathom that. And I'm, I try, well, I, I do my best as much as possible to be very supportive and look from the other lens as well. Because I do want, if anything, I really do want us to work together. We talk about restorative practices. Our ancestors, native, native ancestors, that's, that was our, 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 that's how we handled everything. We sit in, whether it was a teepee, a Hogan, wiki up, pueblo, everyone sat in a circle and they sit, listened and figured out a plan. They planned it. They heard everyone and then from there they planned. And so that's where I come from when I'm trying to understand, um, law enforcement. But I would also like to be respected in that way with what I'm trying to say in an authentic, genuine matter, which sometimes I'm terrified to. But I'm going to continue to do that. And so, um, and so I just wanted to express that. Um, as I mentioned, today's been a very difficult day today. All day today, I've been hearing stories of our native women. Um, you know, our murder rate of native women is 10 times the national average on some reservations in urban communities. So I've been hearing a number of stories and some were, you know, they talk about there's no law enforcement that have been supportive. So and then hearing of, you know, hearing of my dear friend as well is who Darling's talking about. That's emotional too. So I just wanted to, I'm gonna continue, you know, and work with law enforcement. Um, I'm still waiting. I actually don't have it. I don't have a number to contact officer I'm signed up with. I'm still waiting to get that settled or to get in contact with that because I definitely would like to, um, uh, meet up with the officer I'm assigned with. So thank you.
And that takes courage and we appreciate it. Commissioners.
I, I know that we've lost our one officer who was in any of those dialogues. I, I guess I would, I might, Larry, ask if Chief or Assistant Chief, if either of you have heard anything about the dialogues from any of the officers who were there?
Dante, Commissioners, I have, uh, I haven't heard the conversations. Again, they were, as Larry talked, they were private and, uh, I haven't heard any of the, the outcomes or any of these stories. That's why I've been, uh, very, uh, appreciative of the commissioners who have shared some of these things this, this evening. So thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Dante, I think I'll hand it back to you for now, um, but have heard the input from Commissioner McDonald and others that, uh, the conversation should continue and know that we'll explore the best ways for that to, to happen. And thanks all for sharing so much.
Well, thank you, everyone, for sharing the difficulty of your day and the difficulty of this conversation, um, for your communities and for yourself. We know it's not easy and we certainly appreciate your being willing to be vulnerable in order to try to make things better. So we truly appreciate it. Um, I know we're about 30 minutes past time. I, I think we've hit most of the agenda items. I would suggest, um, certainly for training, we're continuing to do our work and what we're doing. Um, I don't have anything in particular to report. Shabana, I just ask you if there's anything in particular that, um, committees would like, your committee would need to report?
No, I don't think that there is. And I'll, I'll invite my commission members to correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe we are all set with, with anything we need to bring to the full commission at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Um, youth subcommittee, anything to report? I'm not sure we still have MJ or, or Helyo. Okay. As I said, we have lost the, the quorum, so can't make any official decisions. Um, but I hate to end on a heavy note. But I, I, as you can see, and I hope the chief can see the power of the stories of the commissioners who spoke today. And the need to. And the need to continue those conversations, not just from their perspective, but I would also argue from your officer's perspective, the need to continue these conversations to share perspectives and come to a greater understanding of certainly community perspectives because I'll offer my not so humble opinion that many of the things that the commissioners shared weren't really heard by the officers. And that's just more traumatizing and difficult as they step into some of those conversations. I think as Commissioner Salsar Hall was describing, Commissioner Smith and others describing the stories that are very real to them on a daily basis aren't necessarily heard or that perspective understood as the officers do what they do. That doesn't mean they're bad people. It just, I'm suggesting that some of those perspectives aren't heard because they're not understood. And maybe they don't understand where they come from. And we haven't had enough time to have those deeper conversations. And that's, I think, what we all would like to see happen so that we can all get to a better place. So, happy Wednesday. As always, thank you for your time, your energy, because this is draining work. You have to give your energy. And it's not always easy to do. So I certainly thank you for letting me take your energy and hopefully try to do something good with it. And you do this work and shape your energy and the positive outcomes for the city of Salt Lake and the communities that you represent. So I, I truly thank you for all that you do. Any final thoughts, comments, questions, concerns, weddings, divorces, babies, anything going on? Commissioner Andrew Weir, and I'll give you the last word.
Kidding, right? I thought we were gonna get off the call. Look, I spoke a lot during those meetings. And I didn't want to get in the way of what people had to say today because it is so powerful and I would like to let it wash over me. Officers go out and work hard for our community and they put their lives on the line and then they don't understand why people are mad at them. And we've got to get to that. Got. So I've asked, I've asked commissioners to share their stories so that the officers can hear them because if, if they don't, then we can never change that much, right? So it's true that the officers work hard. It's also true that we need to do better. And the, the nuance of that in the training that we're trying to craft. Chief, you, you said it, we gotta get it right. And if we can, if we can, and we talk to each other and understand each other, and then law enforcement can serve the whole community, which makes all of us safer and they're more effective at their jobs. Quite frankly, policing is easier when they. So thanks for the invitation. I didn't want to talk over anybody else. Being as always, so being, I knew, I knew a different May 5th because of your Facebook posts. Thank you for how. Yeah, as a, as a privileged white man who worked in law enforcement, I try to learn all the time and do better. And I ask all of my colleagues in law enforcement the same because the unity message is real and it's important. And as we work on this commission, let's get to that healthy dialogue where we understand each other and defensiveness goes down for the education. Thanks for the last word, Dante. And I'll, I'll explain next meeting why I don't talk too much, but I'll let that go.
All right. Well, thank you, sir. And thank you, Commissioners, Philly, Single Day, the Single Day Mile. And please, please remember missing and murdered indigenous women around this country and the impact it is having and the lack of awareness that it does. So thank you, Commissioners.
All over the world, not just in this country.
No question, no question. Thank you. All right. So have a great rest of your evening, everyone, and we will see you again soon.
Thanks, everyone.